All right, welcome to the fourth installment of the Budget Work Session. We, unless you have anything to say Kathy, to start us off, we're going to start off with Capital Projects is what we have first on the list here, and Jade Dennis is going to lead the way.
Four.
Four, okay.
Good morning, members of council, Jade Dennis, Capital Projects Director. Just appreciate the opportunity to come in and tell you a little bit about the Capital Projects Department and the budget needs for the department. Just as a reminder, we are not the newest department, but we are among the newest departments, generate or put together a department in the winter of 2016, 2017, in response to the 2016 bond referendum, and with the intent of really kind of bolstering up our capacities with regard to project delivery, and increased department from ten staff members, which was a division of the Capital Projects Management Division, to fifteen members of staff for the Capital Projects Department. Our general service delivery involves capital project financial management, which is essentially, we're trying to work with departments to understand, to help them with the development of projects through the planning phases of the projects, all the way through design, construction, and then when we turn the project over to completion. So we're really talking about the life cycle of a project in four distinct project areas, or planning, design, construction, and then completion. So working with departments early to try to assess what their capital needs are, developing budgets, we are kind of a clearinghouse for information with regard to cost materials and what we're currently seeing projects at, so we're hopefully helpful in putting together the plans for future CIP processes. One important part of our design that we've included in our project development is thirty, sixty, and ninety percent review of projects, and really wanting to, as we go through these projects, understand that if there's a need for additional budget or revision of scope in a project, that we're able to capture that, and then also, good financial management through a project, once we establish scope and have design done, being able to think to what was envisioned and deliver that project. In order for us to do that, we work with the departments to provide that oversight of the project management. It really is a collaborative effort. A lot of this, these projects have years of history, maybe even decades of history, from a standpoint of master planning efforts, which results in local area plans, which ultimately turn into a project, and then are put into the CIP. So really understanding what our department owners or sponsor departments are wanting to envision, are envisioning for to deliver these projects, and working closely with them to capture those community inputs, and that, so that we deliver a project that meets expectations. One thing we also have been able to kind of increase our capacity on is design services. A lot of our design work is out of house, and it will continue to be contracted out to consultants. But we are, have also been able to, in our project management program manager role, has been able to hire some licensed professional architects and engineers. So some of this design work, we're able to pull in-house a little bit, but also, it just helps us to be able to be better managers of projects, so when we're onsite and working with contractors and consultants, we can be informed related to their project, any changes in the field. Project inspection and project survey are two services that have been provided by the city and the Capital Projects Management Group for a long time. These are really key functions for us, to make sure that we have eyes on the project as it's moving forward. We have three inspectors that perform that. In a situation where we have a big project, like River Arts District, we may do outside consulting services as well for project inspection. And survey is another very important part of our service delivery. It helps us to understand the project limits, what we can build inside the right-of-way limitations, but also, we do a lot of survey work for other departments, in vegetative surveys, and you know, what's in, what trees are in the right-of-way, what trees are outside of the right-of-way, just a lot of work for other departments. Mandates and legal requirements, obviously, our guideposts are the procurement contractor requirements that are established by the state and our internal requirements. That's for consulting services, RFQs, request for qualifications, all the way through bidding. With our contractor environment, which I'll talk about, challenges bidding has been a little bit of a challenge for us. We have to have three bids to open up a project, and that has been a challenge. Some actual services or construction that we've done over the last few years have had one or two in the first bid, then we can reopen, and we can open with less than three bids. First time in my career I've experienced zero bids was last summer, so contractor availability is a bit of a concern. One other thing that we, we're having significant use of grant funding for the delivery of our projects, which is great, the grant funds are out there, but they all have their own unique requirements and set of expectations. Even federal grants from two different agencies are going to have different requirements, so it's really important for us to have an administrative handle on that, be able to understand, because the loss of, the results of not handling those grants appropriately are potential loss of funding, reimbursement of funds, loss of confidence for future funding, and then also, we just need to be prepared for the audits after the projects are completed. Key partners are the finance department. We were kind of a department in transition right now, we're trying to find a permanent space where we can kind of collect our entire group, but we've been fortunate, the program management staff, to be co-located with budget in the early years of our department. It's helped us to be able to really bounce ideas off, to really get good information, help understand the cash flows as the project delivery over time. Client departments or sponsor departments or owner departments, they're the groups we're working for. This is more or less a service-based consultant-type process, and we feel like they're the important group that understands what the community needs are, and has a high expectation for us to deliver upon those needs. Community project stakeholders, again, to go out to the community, their involvement should happen early in the planning phases. We are going to continue to have them involved throughout the design of a project, and develop those design processes around, collecting the information that we need to deliver the project, again, meet the expectations. One of the most affected groups with regard to any project deliveries, residents and businesses that are actually being built in their front yard, and, or, so that's, it's really important for us to establish with the contractors and with our work group, the ability to get out there and retain, establish and maintain those relationships. It's never easy to have a construction project right in front of your residence or your business, but we can make those things easier, and certainly, it's important for us to be out there doing that outreach. As in a lot of the other budget presentations, you've seen salaries and benefits are heavy, that's, we're no exception. But one unique aspect of the way we're able to charge off our salaries is that we can actually charge those back to projects. The intent is that we'll charge 1.16 million staff dollars back to projects, and so the total operating impact would be about $313,000. Again, FTEs is fifteen, fifteen. The operating, to break down the operating aspects, it's, these are just, you know, a lot of this is associated with keeping our, we do hire professionals, we have to have those licenses kept up, and the training provided to all staff so that they can be current with industry needs. You can see that there's kind of an outlier of 32,000 with books and audio visual, that actually is reflective of software. We planned on maybe investing in a software for project management. What we've been successful at is really identifying the use of existing tools, and taking advantage of our IT staff, working with budget, and putting together things like the dashboard. That was all created in-house as a communications tool. And so we still reserve that money to potentially look at other, you know, things that we might be helping us, might help us be more successful, to expand the contractor community, but right now, it's just. This is the trend of costs over time. You can see the 2017, 2018, again, is the addition of staff, but we also didn't, we weren't as successful in charging back to projects. We have modified our processes now to not only improve our record-keeping processes, but we're able to actually report out and get that information on a quarterly basis versus annual. We were doing that once a year, and it just wasn't sufficient to make sure that we were tracking that, so we've improved the process, worked with finance to be better monitoring, to establish better monitoring of that chargeback. So we do feel like that next year, you'll see a vast improvement in that. Budget changes, again, we are relatively new department, so it is, those changes are an impact to the budget as a whole. Department of Challenges, as I mentioned, we do have a contract, we are competing with the private sector, we're competing with other municipalities, and we're competing with ourselves, and we just have a lot of work going on right now, so. We are, one thing we've done, we're preparing, council will see, over the next four to six months, quite a few bids, requests for contract authorization for construction, because we're trying to shift our bidding schedule back into the winter, hopefully getting ahead of contractors scheduling out there here, so. That's an effort. We're also doing some contractor outreach and surveying to understand what the challenges are. Some of the indications, some early indications are that they'd like to be contacted with more directly. We work through the state's procurement system, and so that might be of use for some of that money that we've set aside for softwareers to be able to get more of a direct contact. Additionally, contractor development is something that we need to look at. And then keeping community informed, as I mentioned, the dashboard is our, really our first effort at that, it's been successful. We have about 550 people a month looking at that individual hits, it's better. I didn't know, I didn't know what that meant a couple of months ago, and I was told that that's pretty good.
Have you taken Esther out of it?
Yeah.
And analyzed it?
Encourage everybody to get a look. But it is good information from a standpoint of being able to understand, it's real time. I mean, really, that's one of the pride, the biggest points of pride of this whole thing is that we are updating financial information every day, so if we pay an invoice today, it will be reflected on the information tomorrow. Department of Goals is to continue to be collaborative, that's internally and externally, really making sure that all of our stakeholders are involved in projects, and really, from an internal perspective, being able to communicate, provide enough information to all involved in a project that they can feel confident in being able to communicate out to the public. And then just continue to move the CIP and the bond projects forward. We know that we have a limited timeline, we're almost, almost exactly five years now to complete the bond work. That's certainly something that we're keeping in mind, and trying to deliver on that even early. We still have, still have expectations that we'll be able to accomplish that early, and preserving that little buffer there at the end, so.
Okay, we're going to hold you to that.
Maybe a month or two, but that completes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have one question, not in this set of information, but in the other information that we, that we have, your organizational chart, so there's you, and there's a couple of other people, and then there's Innovation District Program Manager, Transportation Program Manager, and Parks Program Manager, so are those kind of the three buckets, sort of the three buckets for the bonds, although Innovation District isn't really?
Innovation District is not, it was an established group with the capital projects management division. The affordable housing has actually moved to economic development.
Right.
And so they're working on that, going through a great process there. Innovation District is really focusing on the Charlotte Street Corridor, downtown, River Arts District, and, but we are, you know, there's, there needs to be some flexibility in that, so if we have somebody that feels like there's, or if we have a time where there's not a huge demand on one person's time.
Right.
That will shift projects.
And are these people actually in your department, or are they, like, is the Transportation Program Manager in the Transportation Department?
No, they're in our department, yeah.
Okay, okay.
And working really closely with those departments.
Great, okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. All right, I have next up on here, Development Services, Ben Woody. I have to go look at the presentation.
I'm going to set a timer so I stay on track here. Okay, good afternoon, Ben Woody, Development Services Director, and I am going to kind of dive right in. So Development Services is, I guess, a relatively new department for the city of Asheville, it predates me, but it's, it hasn't been in existence too long, but the concept of Development Services is to create a single point of contact, or kind of a single point of organization, so that development applications, that includes citizens and contractors and developers, can kind of navigate the process, the review process, with a little more efficiency and certainty. So it's a good concept, and I think we've worked on that, the staff has, and myself, for several years now, and what we've, what we're doing now, I think, is some good things in Development Services in terms of how we're managing our operations and the level of service we can provide. So essentially, to give some context, is when development applications are coming before the city councils, we call that entitlement, that really operates more through planning and urban design, and that's kind of where our relationship is with them, but once, once a conceptual project's been entitled, so it's been through the city council, public hearing process, or any advisory board decisions have been made, then it really comes down to Development Services. So we're kind of managing development, once it's been through the political process and the kind of discretionary process, so we're more the keeper of, now that you're ready to go, what, how do we apply the rules and make sure you meet those, and develop consistent with policy. And we have three principal functions, and so number one is building safety. Building safety, and the best way I can describe it to people, is building safety is the group of staff that manage construction that's vertical. So once, once, once the building starts coming out of the ground, the building safety planner, viewers, and inspectors are going to ensure that that vertical construction is consistent with the state building codes and with any other local codes or policies we have in place. Site engineering is the other kind of bucket, and that's, that's the horizontal construction. So typically, when developments are proposing grading, on-site stormwater management, you know, land disturbance, that, those types of things, erosion control, the site engineering staff are evaluating that for compliance with rules and regulations. And then finally, we have a zoning review and inspections component. That's where we're really closely aligned with planning and urban design in that area, but essentially, Development Services manages the technical review committee, so when things enter the TRC process, which is the technical review, we manage that process, and we have planners and staff in DSD that kind of perform the zoning functions at that level, or for smaller projects like residential building permits, et cetera. Got a couple other services, we do emergency addressing, so we make sure that our first responders can properly get to addresses for new construction. Along with Public Works, we help manage the National Flood Insurance Program, so that's the program that FEMA sets forward and has flood guidelines for development, allows the community to receive reduced flood insurance premiums. We also administer Asheville's local housing, minimum housing ordinance, and finally, we provide continuing education to our local contractors, as well as our staff. So we have a lot of mandates and legal requirements, and that spans everything from FEMA, for the National Flood Insurance Program, all the way down to NC general statutes and the state building codes. The building safety folks are primarily operating in the general statutes and the building codes. The site engineering, they're mandated by the FEMA requirements, as well as state statutes, and then our zoning staff and other functions are kind of mandated locally by the Unified Development Ordinance and the Minimum Housing Code. Now, something interesting I want to share, is I think when everybody thinks about the building code, you think about a book, but the building code's actually 12 books, and so we are responsible for administering 11 of those 12 books, so it's not just the building code, it's types of building, its trade, such as electric, plumbing, et cetera. So it's actually, I'm always amazed at the amount of information the staff has to be able to be aware of, and then make sure that our contractors and builders and even citizens are meeting those requirements. So it's a pretty extensive database of knowledge they have to work with every day. Key partners for us is obviously anybody that's involved in the development review process, so it's kind of the administrativeness of TRC, we collaborate every day with all the departments in the city, and having those relationships helps us be effective. Over recent years, I think we've developed a strong partnership with ITS, and I'll talk about this in a minute, but a lot of that is a reflection of how technology's beginning to influence how we do business, and that's not even from a process standpoint, but even from construction technology, so, and as you're aware of, we have what's called a tech fund here in the city of Asheville, so each permit that's processed, four percent of the permit cost is put into a fund that's set aside to make technology improvements, and we've really made a lot of progress in that area. External partners are development and construction community, and to give the context of that, that's everything from the largest contractors in Asheville, to the Asheville Independent Restaurant Association, to the homeowners that's just putting a deck on the back of their house. So, you know, our stakeholders are narrow in the sense of they're probably building something, or want to build something, but it's really diverse in terms of what they bring to the table, because again, it could be, it could be Cleveland Construction Company from Cleveland, or it could be a homeowner that's just building a little deck, so we have a lot of different challenges in how we bring those stakeholders to the table and share information. And that, actually, I would even argue that even citizens that aren't developing are stakeholders, because they have, they want information and access to our process, so we have a pretty, pretty broad group of outside partners we deal with. And of course, we have our, the Department of Insurance is a state agency that manages the building code, Department of Environmental Quality is a state agency that manages the stormwater and erosion control standards, then, as you know, development needs sewer, so we have to work with MSD frequently to make sure that's in place. Like a broken record, we are personnel-driven, service-driven, we have, we have 92% of our department's cost are tied up in salaries and benefits, so we are very much heavily driven by our, by the staff we have, because again, what we're doing is we're taking regulations, mandates, policies, and at a human level, we're requiring contractors and builders to comply with those, so it's a lot of human interaction. One thing I want to point out is we have, in the Development Services budget, we fund 49.5 positions, but however, and Greg will talk to this more, we do have 8.5 positions that are funded from the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, that's most of our stormwater and erosion control staff, so we actually have a total of 58 full-time equivalents that are in the DSD department. And I just wanted to take a moment and tell you what that looks like. So we have 58 staff, but in FY '18, we opened nearly 10,000 records, that's 10,000 records for some sort of development application or permit, and then we performed more than 52,000 inspections. So that's just kind of a glimpse of the workload that we're doing every year in Development Budget drivers, and I did get a question prior to the work session today, so I'm going to take a few minutes to kind of work through these budget drivers to explain those. The supplies is our biggest, and that's really just an outlier, similar to kind of one of Jade's budget items he described. Our supplies account this year has $36,000 in it, that was for reconfiguring and adding some additional workstation, and make workstations for staff, and then making some changes to our customer area in the Development Services Department. So we're really, really tight on space down in the bottom of the Public Works Building, and so a lot of times, making room for other people is very challenging for us. So ordinarily, supplies would be $36,000 less, and not on this list, but I just wanted to point that out. But dropping to the next one, rental lease, if you can believe this, that is the budget for our leases for copiers and printers, and for purchasing paper and toner. So we budget, and we spend almost $50,000 a year in paper, and that's a reflection of the process that we've used in Asheville, and how dependent we are on kind of just shuffling paper around.
So Ben, can I ask you a question about that? So as we move toward, shift all of that more toward electronic submissions and everything, is that going to go down?
It's absolutely going to go down. Matter of fact, one of the most painful things I did this year was renew a lease for a copier, so I wasn't quite sure we were ready to get, start getting rid of copiers yet, but I anticipate we will not spend $50,000 this year. So we are with electronic, like you just said, electronic review, we're heading in a different direction. But the other thing to consider is the next line item, bank fees, that's our credit card fee, so that's the fees we pay for our customers using credit cards. So we still have people that bring in checks, and we probably always will, and we'll always accept those, but as we push more towards online ways of doing business, I expect the bank fees item probably goes up. So we're going to decrease rental lease, but we may see increases in bank fees. And again, it's amazing to me how much it costs to actually use credit cards in terms of fees, but that's what that is. The training budget, again, we have 58 staff, and we, most of those staff are administering and overseeing state and federal regulations, so they have to carry certain certifications, so that's just a function of making sure that, number one, we're helping our staff get the certifications they need to do work, and number two, making sure to keep those certifications. Quick example in the training, is a building inspector to be fully qualified needs to obtain 12 certifications. It takes about five years to do that, so it's a huge investment for us in each inspector. Once they have those certifications, they have to do continuing education every year to maintain those, so there's a pretty good investment in our employees to maintain these certifications, that we really don't have a choice, because we have to have those to do these inspections. And lastly, obviously, we're out inspecting things, so we're in cars a lot, so the fleet maintenance and fuel is just a reflection of the scope of work we do. Prior year spending, so we're pretty consistent in how we spend, how our budget grows, you know, some of that growth is just salary, you know, adjustments and cost of living and things like that, but for the most part, I think DSD, when it started years ago, I think this, what you see is reflecting of just staffing that department to meet the work demands that exist, so I feel like there's been times when we've been terribly understaffed in DSD. I think we're moving in, I should say this cautiously, I think we're moving to a point in time where we're actually pretty well-staffed for the workload we have. Again, we're talking 50,000 inspections, 10,000 records, that's just, there's a lot of, there's a lot of daily tasks that happen down there, but I think mostly, the spending is just a reflection of that. Revenue is kind of a different story for us. Revenue, to say construction revenue's volatile is probably an understatement, so the revenue is always, if I could show you 10 years of this, it just goes up and down, and that's really a reflection of the cyclical nature of construction. So constructions, it's up, it's down, and what's really, what skews these revenue numbers sometimes, you can see FY '16, '17, and it has, it's a big, big year, we probably won't do that again, because that's Mission. So the Mission Tower, you know, they paid their permit fees in FY '16, '17, that was a huge project. Our permit fees are based on the value of constructions, not the market value of when it's done, but the value of what it costs to build it. So things like Mission will skew those revenue totals up, but one important takeaway that I want to make sure everybody is aware of, is at Mission Hospital, we collected the revenue in FY '16, '17, we'll provide the service until FY '20. So oftentimes, for these big projects, you grab the check in one year, but then, you know, we pretty much have an inspector on that hospital site all day, every day, for probably three to four years. So the service delivery happens many years after the revenue is gone and long ago accounted So for us, we had, we had, I thought, a good budget year, we did some interesting things, and some of the changes that we did do was we added 1.5 positions in the site engineering area to improve our service delivery. And this 1.5, because DSD funded half of one of those positions, and Public Works funded the other half. We paid for that by our implementation of the fee study. If you remember, we did a fee study, and we focused our fee increases in planning and zoning, and in site engineering, so that was what helped us bring those positions on board to help improve our service. The other thing that we did is, on the building safety side of things, we focused on some compensation changes, and what we really, what we basically did is we created the career progression plan, so try to put some things in place to give our building safety staff something to work towards, to provide some career growth, and like I said earlier, it takes five years to train a building inspector. We really wanted to stay, but to do that, we've got to be competitive with our neighbors, and even beyond that, you know, it's, you can make really good money right now if you're an electrician, probably more than you'll make as an electrical inspector, so we've got to put things in place to make sure that we're keeping those qualified people as an electrical inspector. And I think some stability that we offer is part of that, but also just an opportunity for career growth. And we actually funded those compensation changes through the elimination of assistant director position. Department of Challenges for us, like I said earlier, it's the cyclical nature of construction. When we're busiest, the private sector's paying the best, so it's really hard. Same problem that Public Works has in other departments, it's really a challenge to keep qualified people here, but I think we're making some progress towards that. The other thing, as I said earlier, is just the lag. A lot of times, when, when the revenue looks bad for the city, sometimes we're our most busy, because we're lagging behind the revenue in terms of the service we provide. Technology's a big, big issue for us. I think our customers, we do, we do a quarterly survey, and every quarter, far and away, the biggest need they have is access to a digital process, so we are working diligently to get there, but of course, you know, when you're, when you're moving from spending fifty... moving from spending fifty thousand dollars on shuffling paper to doing a digital process, it's more than just having somebody submit a PDF. You have to kind of redesign your entire process and how your staff works and how they view the plans. So we're kind of working with technology to evolve as quickly as we can. And then finally, for us, it's managing customer expectations. I think oftentimes, you know, we have a lot of pressure from our development community to be faster, to be more responsive, to be more predictable, to provide a better service. And we do that, we try hard to do that. But at the same time, we have a lot of expectations from our citizen community to make sure that we're providing information to them early and often, to make sure that we're, we're holding development accountable and making sure it meets the city's standards, to be cautious, to be systematic in that approach. So we really kind of, kind of get caught in between two forces in terms of our expectations, and we really try to meet both those expectations, but it's not always easy to do that. And then finally, and I think within my time, we, we've got some goals that we're working on, some of these kind of carry over, but our number one goal is creating a digital process. I think there's a lot of efficiency and resource and ultimately probably even savings to the city in general, if we can move in that direction, and we're doing that. We've got a number of processes that are already digital. We're testing right now, and in January, our goal is to roll out a digital process for all residential purpose. That'll be a huge step forward for us. That means a lot of, and of course, we're trying to build the resources and educational materials to make sure everybody has access to that. And from an equity standpoint, we'll always have a front counter and a staff person to help people. Not everybody wants to do it online, we know that, but if we can, if we can siphon off even thirty percent of our lobby traffic to a digital format, what it actually does is gives us more time to focus on people that actually need the help in the lobby. So we're optimistic that there's a, there's kind of a win-win in that implementation effort. We're expediting reviews, so, you know, things that align with your goals, with council priorities, we want to, we want to, we want to put those to the top of the list. We want to give those the highest level of service, and so we are actively doing that. Our first kind of issue to tackle is affordable housing. So actually, tomorrow, we're meeting with Lee Walker Heights, and we're going to attempt, as opposed to spending a hundred and eighty days to approve their building plans, we're going to try to do it in a week, which seems unbelievable to me, but we've got some good synergy on that, so the contact should be...
Did you hear that, Scott? How long was it?
It can take up to a hundred and eighty days.
Instead, it's going to be a week.
It may be. That's a cloud, it takes, it takes effort from us, but it takes effort from the private sector, too. They have to be prepared to do things quickly as well. But I think there's some, there's some, there's a higher level of service that we can provide in certain areas, and we want to align that with council goals, and I think we have the capacity to do that. So that's one of the things that we're trying to figure out and trying to do better with. We've, we're in the process of creating a performance dashboard. I only hope it can look as good as Capital Projects because that's a great tool, but we want to have a similar situation where, you know, as a management tool, you can see what volume looks like. So instead of doing these forums, we'll still do the forums, but, you know, we present this data twice a year, well, it's just always going to be there. It'll be available to the staff, to the policymakers, to citizens. So we want to, we want to build a dashboard, and we're in the, kind of the testing phase of that. And our last goal, and this will always be a goal, is just to do a better job communicating. That's not just with developers and contractors, that's with citizens, too. And one thing we want to do is we want to educate people to understand what we do and how to be successful, whether it's getting a permit or sewing up to a city council meeting, whatever it is, but just making sure that the information is out there and available, and we're educating people how to be, you know, how to participate in Development Services. And that's my presentation. I can answer any questions.
Well, this, this is, I'm, this is probably a question for you as much as it is a generic question. I, I'm, as I'm looking at the, this circle, the budget overview, and I'm looking at benefits as a percentage of salaries, just in these four different departments, it varies by, I mean, when I do that math, it varies by like almost ten percent. I'd be curious, the reasoning behind that, and how that, again, Ben, this isn't yours, but I'd like, I'd like to see in the aggregate kind of what those comparisons are and why the big, I mean, they are literally almost ten percent differences from one department to the next.
And we can provide you with that. I will tell you, in the three that you've seen today, or the two that you've seen, and then the other one, if you notice in this one, you know, the total amount of their salaries is different. I don't know if they've included the benefits. The same thing was true with Capital Projects because they charge some of their salary and benefits somewhere else. So I don't know that we're looking at apples, an apples-to-apples comparison, but we'll get that information to you.
Okay, because I was just taking benefits divided by salaries, and in this case, it's forty-five percent.
But you're saying, you're saying it wouldn't all show up in the...
Right. In some cases, like the Capital Projects, some of their salaries and benefits are actually charged to projects. In this case, I think what they've done is taken that full four million and had the benefits. So I don't know that you're looking at an apples-to-apples, but we'll get you that information.
Probably the bigger comparison is the FTEs, right? Not necessarily as a percentage of salary, but it's sort of as a percentage of FTEs.
Yeah, but even that is swings by six thousand dollars per person.
We'll get you that. The, you know, that number up there, forty-nine, is actually fifty-eight, so I don't know that you're, again, I don't know that you're looking to an added apples, apples comparison, but the one that would probably be the, well, maybe not, the one that would, General Services would probably be the truest one that we would be looking at, but we'll provide you that information.
Okay.
Because the other ones have enterprise fund, or they charge positions to other accounts or other funds, so.
So what's being shown here is the general fund, the hit to the general fund, is that?
Yes. Well, in the circle is the hit to the general fund.
Well, but not in Capital Projects. I go back to Capital Projects, and, and the total, the gross, the gross number that we're showing is a million.
But see here, it says right there.
Right, I know, but the net that gets hit to the general fund is only three thirteen, so this is the gross number that's showing in that circle.
It purports to be showing you the gross number.
Right. So I just, again, just would like to understand.
I'll just say, Ben, that since you've been here, I've heard nothing but great things about you from anybody I talk to who works in Development Services, so thank you for your leadership.
And, and greatly improved comments about people who experience it.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and a lot of that credit obviously goes to the staff as well, so thank you for saying that.
And I actually meant to say the same thing about Jade, and now that Dustin's walked in, I'll say the same thing about Dustin. I hear great things about you guys, so.
Ben, one quick question on the, on the, I know on the revenue trends slide, there's reasons for why we have, we have one-timers, and there's, there's also the lag in terms of when things hit. Do you have a sense, just anecdotally, what development is doing in Asheville? Is it slowing down, is it speeding up? Do you have a sense, is it stable, you know, just, just in terms of what you're hearing anecdotally, or what you guys are experiencing, or is there certain types of projects that you're seeing more of versus less? Can you give us any sense of what you're seeing out there?
The data says development's slowing. I don't think it's free-falling, but I, but I think it's going to level out to probably what is going to be the real normal. If you see the FY seventeen, eighteen revenue, we're going to be closer to that probably in eighteen and nineteen. And I think, it feels like you see a lot of cranes in the sky and everything, but what I think it is, I think the large, expensive commercial construction that really drives the revenue, that's what's starting to slow down. We continue to see alterations and small things, but those aren't big revenue generators. But the big, the big stuff is starting to slow. The data says that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll go to General Services with James Ayers.
Mad Mayor, members of council, value colleagues, thank you for the opportunity to be here today to represent the General Services Department. My name is James Ayers, I'm Director of the Department, and I'm so pleased to talk to you about the five divisions that, which the department's comprised with forty-two people. What you'll see up ahead of you here is some of our core services that we deliver. It helps me to illustrate the five divisions in the department. You'll see, for example, our Building Construction Division, they handle the planning, design, and construction of new buildings, as well as renovation of existing facilities. Our Facility Maintenance Division, they handle the building maintenance and repair that you see there. And our Building Operations, that's handled by a group called City Hall Operations, but their purview goes well beyond City Hall and into other buildings owned by the city. In addition, our Fleet Management Division, they handle both the procurement, as well as the maintenance of over eight hundred and fifty vehicles and pieces of equipment across the city, so quite a portfolio there as they manage those assets. Speaking of assets, our last division, the Real Estate Division, they also handle asset management, but in this time, real property, things like land acquisition and disposition, as well as handling property leases and management. We'll have more examples of these, and in fact, these are just a handful of the services. Our next slide will show, for example, other things provided by, by our department. Some examples of that would include keeping the lights on with our building operations, getting the mail delivered, keeping the elevators going up and down. So if you're all here today, I think they're doing their job right. We even have other things that just happen in the background. The city fuel station, for example, has delivery of fuel from biodiesel to compressed natural gas, or CNG. Now, as we look at our departments, it's like the rest of the N.C. here, we have really a lot of mandates and legal requirements, we hit some of the high ones, and they're at the federal, state, and local levels. So at the federal level, of course, we're guided by the, by the OSHA regulations, whether we're constructing new buildings or operating facilities, the general, you know, general industry standards. But there are other federal regulations that get us as well. I just mentioned the fuel station, so we have underground storage tanks, environmental protection, and other rules with which we must comply. Of course, we also come to the state level, and while there's a great statutory framework that affects us in many ways, I think our number one area is the purchasing and procurement for procuring design services or getting contractors to build buildings for us, or just buying goods and services. Those, those state standards are very important to us. Of course, even here at the local level, we have some great guidance from our own city council. Some of it goes back in time. An example you'll see up there is, over a decade old, the city resolution on LEED for new construction. And while that resolution may be over a decade old, and the LEED standard has now advanced to version four, we're still, we're still bound by that. In fact, our, the new fire station that we're heading to design for, that one's going to be designed to a LEED standard. Of course, General Services does this with a whole host of key partners. There are two key areas noted here today. First of all, client departments, especially for the management of construction projects. In fact, our customer departments range from transit to parks and rec to community and economic development, as well as APD and AFD. Other departments also benefit from service delivery in General Services, whether we're talking about facility maintenance or provision of fleet vehicles, sort of fueling for those vehicles. So we basically touch every department here in the city. In addition, there are third parties, even beyond the community engagement that we perform for key projects that are out in the community, we even have to think about property owners. So with all the work going on in real estate transactions, again, acquisition or disposition, or things like easement acquisition for projects or leases. In fact, the Employee Health Center, which recently moved, that was spearheaded by the Real Estate Division, getting them a new property in which to provide these vital services. Of course, these services do come with a price tag, and you'll see here at the budget overview, eighty-three percent of our general fund budget is comprised of salaries and benefits. But I really want to stress here the importance of these people. I am very proud to work with a well-qualified group of people in General Services. For example, we have folks who have professional licensure in areas ranging from architecture, engineering, and real estate. On the facility side, we have folks with state licenses in areas ranging from electrical to plumbing. And our mechanics, I have ASC mass mechanic certifications, and EBT, or emergency vehicle technician certifications. So it's a really good group of people, well-qualified, perform these tasks. Now, as we talk about people, we'll head over into our key budget drivers. Now, you'll look here, by far and away, our top two budget drivers are maintenance repairs and contracted services. And what I'd like to point out here is that, let's talk about what's done in-house and what's outsourced. So maintenance repairs often goes to the in-house work. So if we've got air filters to buy, and we do HVAC service, well, our own techs can perform the HVAC service, or the electrical, or the plumbing. And that's, that's a lot of, a lot of important stuff for us to do in-house, but there are some things we have to outsource, specialty trades, things like fire sprinklers or elevator maintenance, and that you'll see under this contracted services line. Now, I do want to give a small preview to council. Next month, you'll see a staff report from General Services, because we want to make sure we look at the services that we provide and see if there are any that should be taken in-house. An example of that would be, we have under contracted services, a contract for custodial services at remote sites. Now, we already have custodians here at City Hall, Muni, and other local, local buildings, but with these remote sites, it's full-time work. So we believe there's an opportunity here for us to bring those one and a half positions in-house, pay them a living wage, and see if it makes sense for us to turn this into a full-time position. And so we'll be bringing that to council in the December timeframe. Of course, speaking of budget, we also have seen some trends here. There's really two things I'd like to point out here. In the dark blue, you'll see an increase from fiscal seventeen to fiscal eighteen on our salaries and benefits. And the reason for that is, in that year, we added two new divisions, the Real Estate Division and the Building Construction Division. In addition, in the light blue, you'll see increases in the other operating costs, and that spike is due to a one-time thing, a three hundred thousand dollar allocation that we were so grateful to council for providing. That was for our facilities condition assessment and diagnostic study. That is so important for us, because it helped us to get, basically to assess the major buildings under the general fund. It allowed us to estimate the cost to take and tackle both deferred maintenance, as well as costs going forward. And this isn't just some report that's going to sit on a shelf. This is actually, we actually have a database now where we can actually go out and predict what do we need year by year, so we can plan those investments in the future. Now, as we go from fiscal eighteen to fiscal nineteen, there weren't any changes in the employee, in the number of employees we had, or any major changes in the budget. And, but we are still faced with some challenges. Now, it may not be the first time you've heard the first challenge, and that is the lack of available contractors. What we're finding is, in some trades, we're finding it very difficult for folks to even bid the projects, and especially it's as hard in the small to medium-sized projects with so much work going around, we're finding it difficult. But working with other, other departments, we're looking at ways to outreach to companies, especially minority and disadvantaged business enterprises. So we're going to continue to work on that and try, and try and see what kind of reach we can get. In addition, you'll see up there, city facility maintenance needs. Now, we talked a little bit about deferred maintenance, and what we were trying to do here is attack that backlog of deferred maintenance, and then move from this kind of reactive repair work into proactive preventive maintenance. That will save the city long-term in terms of what we spend on these buildings, money that can be used for better purposes. Last but not least, we're also seeing a growing need for city facilities. As the city grows and the workforce grows, we have to have space to put these folks and give an appropriate work environment. So we'll continue to work on that, but we want to look at it holistically, not just chop-up offices here and there to try and squeeze people in, but take a bigger-picture look, which is actually a segue for some of our, our key goals of the coming year. Now, we have many goals as a department, but here are four key areas we'd like to highlight. First off, the facilities master planning and development of a capital planning tool. This is actually aligned with what was called Council Goal Thirty-Six, is now Council Goal Thirty-Two. We had looked at this, we, step one is, is we've taken it, facility condition assessment. Now we can start looking to expand that, standards for facilities, and the way we do, you know, way we do business in terms of space planning and getting a bigger picture on that as well. And that capital planning tool is so important, because when we come to you with asks for our capital, we want to make sure it's based on good, rigorous cost estimating. Next, you'll see the real estate master plan and city-owned land strategy. This goes hand-in-hand with Council Goal Fifteen. Now, originally, we're looking, of course, at affordable housing, and the Real Estate Division's been doing incredible work behind the scenes in terms of the high-impact sites, working for affordable housing. And they had a great, great phase one, is they got the city-owned land database, the property database out there, and it shows the different types of uses, whether affordable housing, stewardship, or whatever. So whether it's for city operations or for affordable housing, this gives a framework for you as decision-makers to look at these properties and make sure it's in alignment with your vision. Next, you'll see fleet policy and process improvement. This includes things like taking our policy. It's a fourteen-year-old policy right now, technology has changed some. We also have some software we need to update, but as part of this, we can update, how do we replace vehicles, and how do we align it with council goals? Again, council has carbon footprint production resolution, and more recently, renewable energy goals, and we want to make sure we update that. Now, we're already putting in the fleet, alternative fuel vehicles of various types, hybrids and CNG and biodiesel, but we need to expand that with the recent resolution on renewable energy, look at more electrification. We actually have on order a hybrid police cruiser, and we're looking at other things. We look at electrification and the technology, and we want to make sure our fleet policy is in line and incentivizes those types of purchases. Well, last but not least, we've got facility construction renovation projects, and it's a lot of fun, because we've got some great projects, oh, dozens of projects, including, but not limited to Fire Station Thirteen, the Art Transit Center renovations, the electric bus charging stations, the U.S. Cellular Center facility improvements, and of course, the Red Panda Building Exhibit. Now, those cute little critters are supposed to arrive any day, so now they'll have a happy home here in Nashville, and we're pleased to play a small part in that. We thank you so much for your support of the General Services Department, and thank you for the opportunity to present here today.
Anyone have any questions? No, you cannot keep the red pandas at your house for the first week.
James, on the facilities condition assessment, forgive me if you've covered this in other readings, has that been completed, or is that ongoing at the moment?
Yes, sir. What we have, the complete phase one is complete. In other words, we did, we assessed the majority of the general fund buildings, especially the occupied ones and the high-impact ones. That is complete, and we have the builder database, which assesses all those buildings. Of course, there are also some smaller facilities that, for cost savings, had to be left off that assessment, but our staff has now been trained to go out and assess those buildings. You'll see things like, for example, at Murphy Oakley, there are some concession stands, or things like that, where we want to now make sure every building's in the database. But phase one is done, and we've got a great deliverable that we're actually already using as we're going through our CIP submittal process for the budget season.
And that's what I was going to ask you. I assume through that process, you found some things that needed to be fixed. And so I'm wondering, in terms of the magnitude of those things, and when we might start seeing them, because at this point, a lot of those things are not plugged into your capital request, right?
Yes, they were not in prior years, but now that we've got that tool in our hands and we're trained on it, we actually did our initial submission to budget for the CIP process. That was already expected from departments. We use that CIP tool for our single-largest submission. And it gave us not just the one-to-five year, but also then the five-to-ten-year look ahead.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Okay, last but not least, public works.
Well, Greg's coming up, let me just mention, I'm on the budget work session page, and it looks like Greg's presentation has been loaded up for both the presentation and the detail information, so I don't know who's uploading that stuff. But we don't have the detail.
She's saying that the presentation is linked on there twice, instead of the presentation and then the detailed information.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Greg Schuler, Public Works Director. I too want to take this moment just to say thank you for the opportunity to do this. This is really a neat thing that we've, I know I've been looking forward to, and my colleagues have as well. I'll get right to it. This is talking about a lot of the core services for the department. You'll see that our presentation is a little bit different, because we have two enterprise funds, as well as a large general fund aspect for the work that we do. And emergency response, I'll touch on a few of these, I want to make sure, I know you have an incredibly busy day today, but emergency response, a large part of that is talking about weather-related, or, goodness, we don't know, we're dealing with flooding and making sure that we're prepared for some potential ice over tomorrow night, or Thursday morning. CIP administration, we do, along with working with Jade's team, we also have a CIP administration team within our stormwater division, as well as within our streets division, that takes care of all the resurfacing, both CIP and bond. The obvious ones are solid waste collection, street and sidewalk maintenance, stormwater, brush collection, bridge maintenance, event support, tree commission, and along with Ben's team, floodplain management. This slide will talk a little bit about some of the things that rely on the streets division, which is solely within, well, I won't say solely, because we do have an enterprise fund within there, but this slide talks about the general fund side. Things from landscaping, graffiti removal, right-of-way encroachments, retaining wall, fence and guardrail maintenance, sidewalk maintenance and furnishings, and facilitation of the tree commission. Next, we'll be talking about sanitation, and we, most of our team help with event support and staffing. Sanitation's certainly a big part of that, certainly the recycling, solid waste collection, code enforcement, and one thing I left off of here that's very important is brush collection and leaf collection this time of year. Our folks are out there on the back of the trucks as we speak. Onto our stormwater team, again with Ben's team, the community rating system, we help with that, as well as the floodplain management. What a lot of folks may not know is that we have a person that investigates any potential illicit discharge, to assure that the stormwater quality is what it should be, as well as pollution prevention. Utility billing, as you may imagine, is a huge piece of what happens in this division, but also ditch maintenance, plan review and inspection, public education, and then a lot of what this division does is the construction and maintenance of the stormwater infrastructure. Next is the smaller enterprise fund that resides within our streets division, is a utility cut. Again, like with any enterprise fund, utility billing is an important piece of that. But this is a group, this is a small group, but we'll go into it in a little more detail. Really, they deal mostly with patching and inspection. And I feel like I need to talk a little bit more about the utility cut enterprise fund. It's not, a lot of people don't know a lot about it. It's one that we put together because, in coordination with our utility, our larger utility owners, because they're, this is, it's just the way it is, their goal, whether it be our water department, our own stormwater division, MSD, or the gas company, PSNC, really their interest is to put their infrastructure in the ground, and make the repairs, and install new infrastructure. And in the past, to have them to go back and repair our roads, that's not the business they're in. So really, under Kathy's leadership, it was, along with the utility owners, that was really a great deal, so we could, we had a lot of interest in making sure the roads were repaired properly. And so this enterprise fund was born, and working very well, I might add. Some of the mandates and legal requirements that we operate under, the state-funded street aid, what most folks call the POW bill program, about two-and-a-half million dollars a year is what comes to the city from the state regarding POW bill. Basically, it's looking for centerline mileage of our street network, which is, for us, it's a little over four hundred miles, has to be sixteen feet or wider to be eligible for POW bill maintenance funding. Numerous general statutes and city ordinances, what we call the MPDES, but as you can see here, it's the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, resides within our stormwater division. American Disabilities Act, just like many of our divisions deal with this. For us, it's the aspect of the ADA that falls within the city's rights of way. That's really where we come into play with that, whether it be with sidewalks or handicap ramps, and that's really the two biggest things that we manage in. And then, of course, the national bridge inspection standards, excuse me. It's a federal highway administration program that we are in partnership with North Carolina DOT on, and we inspect each and every one of our bridges biannually. Costs with, again, in partnership with DOT, costs us about fifteen thousand dollars every other year. We have forty-two bridges in our inventory. Our internal key partners, really, we work with every single department within the city, and really proud to be a part of the strong leadership team here at the city. But these are some of the folks that we work with really closely. Economic development, that is really, a lot of that is working with Dana, and our strong ties to downtown, but also working with Chris over at U.S. Cellular Center. We are really a tight partner with those folks, especially when they have large events, or if it becomes an ice storm on New Year's Eve, we have two shows going. Obviously, the connections with water, development services, we share employees, and TRC review, various plans and development review. Legal, we spend a lot of time with legal on all sorts of things, and as far as transportation and capital, those, we're really connected at the hip with those folks, on numerous projects and initiatives. External, we have a very diverse group of external partners, and that includes many of the state and federal and other municipalities that I've already mentioned. We have partnerships with DOT as it relates to treating one another's streets and encroachments for one another. And the same with other municipalities, as far as sharing salt, sand. Utility providers, I've really tried to determine one utility provider that we didn't work with, and we couldn't find one. Everything from ERC to, whether it's our day-to-day operations of sidewalk maintenance, or designing a resurfacing project, we want to make sure that we're working with those folks to minimize any unnecessary disruption or service that they provide. And contractors, we do a whole lot of contracting, but we also work with contractors that are not working for us that want to work within our rights of way. We are charged with policing the city's rights of way, whether it be by encroachment or permits, and it's a large effort to do that, and contractors. Again, it could be a plumber working on a private property, or it could be a contractor doing a three-million-dollar paving job for us. Development and construction community, through encroachments, we are working with folks that want to put up a hot dog stand to Cleveland Construction doing the RS project, and everybody in between. But a lot of, they're talking with me at an early stage, as far as how do we fit this electrical box into the sidewalk without damaging the tree pit twenty years from now, or the tree that will live in that tree pit. So really interesting part of this job in this department, and it's interesting to see how the city is growing and to have a part in it. Really, one of the most important people that we, a group of people, is our community members, how we communicate with our community, take their feedback, educate them on what we do, and some of our best ideas have came from this group of people. And last but not least, our nonprofits. This is a group of people that range from Asheville Greenworks to Riverlink, Downtown Association, many others that I'm not bringing up, just because I would forget, I'm afraid I would forget someone. I included this graph, this looks a little different than what you're used to seeing from the other departments, but initially, I wanted to do this just because I think some people don't have a good concept of what is within Public Works. And after the first community budget meeting, I really confirmed that I wanted to add this when a citizen said, hey, eighty-some people, that's not nearly enough. And so, working with City Manager's Office and Finance, we generated this just to show really what the breadth of the Public Works Department is. The top part is, this area is talking about the entire budget, and showing, top part's talking about dollars, funding. And then the bottom part is talking about FTEs. And of the one-hundred-and-forty-one-and-a-half FTEs, like Ben said, eight-and-a-half of those are funded through Public Works, through their stormwater enterprise fund, but they actually report to Ben and the Development Services. So I appreciate you just having a look at this and being open to looking at something a little different, now to what you're used to looking at. This is the general fund budget for Public Works. Ours is a little different in that our operating costs are not the biggest part of what we do. Well, they are, our salaries and benefits, we are also heavy on the service and employees, but our operating costs are larger than a lot of them, because what we do is very expensive. Our equipment is expensive, concrete and asphalt is very expensive. But as the percentages break down, salaries are thirty-five percent, benefits eighteen, and operating costs, almost half, at forty-eight. I feel like I'm rushing through this, I know there'll be questions later, but...
You do not seem like you're rushing to me.
Pardon?
You do not seem like you're rushing.
Okay.
Not, your speed is just right.
Okay. Onto our street cut utility fund, small group, ten-and-a-half employees, extremely high in proportion operating costs, but these folks do a lot of asphalt work. The asphalt's very expensive, almost ninety dollars a ton, just picking it up with our trucks. Such as, it's a petroleum-based product, and it fluctuates all over the place. Onto our stormwater fund. Again, we've talked about the eight-and-a-half positions that are housed within Development Services, but funded through this enterprise fund. This, too, is a very expensive operation, whether it be pipe, the excavation, and very expensive equipment. Also has a capital aspect within it as well, that requires a lot of our, we also have professional engineers on this team that work alongside Cape and our capital team to really put out some pretty large projects. We have Moore Street in West Asheville currently under construction of one-point-one million dollars currently. So let's talk about our budget drivers. Talked a little bit about the materials, and I won't touch on all of these, but be happy to answer questions on any of them. Currently, concrete's about a hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars per cubic yard, that's a lot, and that is just the material. It costs a lot more than that to put it down. But just, that line item at three-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars is just purchasing the Tipping fees, tipping fees is a really huge piece of what we do financially. Tipping fees are currently just under forty-eight dollars per ton, and that is taking it just to the transfer station here, West Asheville. And brush, we haul a lot of brush, and a lot of that we take to the Riverside Stump Dump, and that is anywhere between sixty-five and seventy dollars per truckload, depending on if it is on a knuckle boom or a rip hacker. So it's very expensive to haul away material. Contracted services, that is a really large item within our department. Far and away, the most expensive piece of that is our recycling contract. It's a multi-year contract, in year eight of a ten-year contract, and roughly about one-point-one million dollars per year. Like James has said, we are constantly looking at ways, what is the best balance? Is this something that we should do in-house, is it something that we should contract out? This one seems like it is, may make the most sense to contract out, just because it's a very expensive process to go and collect it. It is such a volatile market, and what to do with the materials, and it is forever-changing. And this one, when I think I have it figured out, it goes to show that I do not have that part figured out. For our downtown cleanliness contract, that's three-hundred-thousand dollars budgeted per year, you'll be seeing a contract tonight that, it'll be two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. But this one, I think, is a possibility to do in-house. We, I won't get into the details of that unless there's questions about it later, but I think this is one that would be, that would make sense to do in-house, quite honestly. Other things that we have involved in our contracted services line in the general fund are tree planting contracts, it's about a fifteen-thousand-dollar contract, median maintenance, another one that's potentially could be done in-house. And then we have various softwares, anything from asset management to mobile 311 to AutoCAD licenses. General fund prior trends. Really, the last three years have been somewhat stable. What has not... What has not been stable is our inventory that we're being asked to maintain and, as well as the collection points for solid waste and recycling. Those points are definitely on the rise as new homes are being built. Stormwater fund, the trends, and this one also shows the revenues as it's an enterprise fund. The difference, revenues are lower than expenses in 2017, '18 because fund balance that had been built up in prior years are now being allocated to projects that are either under construction or in design. Edwin Celia is a massive project that is being designed currently, and $700,000 in the design alone for that project.
Which project?
Edwin Celia in North Asheville. Utility street cut fund, again, another, the smaller enterprise fund. FY '19 will see an increase of about $180,000 that will catch back up with the revenues because we set it up so that we could assure that we maintain and really replace our vehicles on a timely basis. And the vehicles that we have to purchase for this type of thing are incredibly expensive. Again, 100, right at $180,000 will be showing up in FY '19 for this enterprise fund. Budget changes. Happy to say that we have a treat, we were, thank you for funding for a tree canopy study. This is part two of the three-part process to understand canopy loss within the city, and happy to say that that is almost underway. Also, very happy to say that budget, existing budget was reallocated to implement a asset management system, which will allow us to provide much more efficient core service delivery. And asset management is not a new technology, it is new to the city of Asheville, and I'm really proud that we are able to, to follow our friends in Water who are currently using this software and seeing great dividends, and we're continuing to partner and learn from them as they, as they put it to use. And we have capital maintenance budgets that were shifted to the CIP for one year for, as part of the budget balancing strategy. Some of those were included our guardrail contract, about $100,000, our recycling and solid waste collection roll carts, as well as our sidewalk maintenance contract. Those are just some examples of that. Budget changes, continuing with stormwater, we had a 5% increase to support the infrastructure investments. We also had the development fee changes to support additional revenue and inspections, review, rather. This really resides in DSD, but after collaboration with Finance and with Ben, if it was funded through this, we felt like we should give you the full picture. As far as street cut fund replacement, we've already talked about the purchase of a new patch truck, very happy to get that, it'll make our employees' jobs easier and a better patch, we hope. Onto department challenges, you've heard this numerous times already this afternoon, contractor capacity is at an all-time low, and I have over 30 years in this business and I've never seen it like it is. We also are seeing contracts that we don't have anybody to bid on, or we have one person to bid on. And you can imagine what that does to your prices, and estimating construction contracts right now is as tricky as I've ever seen it. So that is a huge challenge for us as we, again, try to manage the resurfacing part of the bond as well as our CIP, it's a lot of money. But it's not just that, it's retaining walls, it's tree planting, it's sidewalk construction, things of that nature, and it's, it is tough to, to get a handle on reliable estimating practices because the market is such as, is like it is. Along the same lines as attracting and retaining qualified staff, our staff have the skillsets that a lot of people out there are looking for, whether it's truck drivers, inspectors, engineers. We have a hard time attracting and retaining our staff. We're not alone. So the condition of our infrastructure is really a challenge for us right now. I want to make sure that I take this opportunity to thank you and to thank our community for stepping out and, number one, proposing the geo-bonds, but also for our community for seeing the need and being brave and taking that step. Here's an example, some of you have, maybe have heard this. With the pavement management software that we have, we ran the numbers to see what it would take for our PCI to stay flat. And our PCI is really nothing to brag about right now, it's about a 60 out of 100.
Transcuros worse.
Yeah, we would like to point out that transcuros is worse. But tell, say what PCI is.
PCI is Pavement Condition Index, and it is set up so that it is really just like a school grade, 100 being excellent and zero being not so good. And, yeah.
Not so good.
So, ours is in the, is 60. And it would take consistent funding at $5 million per year for our PCI to remain stable. That's about where we're at right now with the bond and our CIP. So we were able to increase our PCI last year with the help of our friends at MSD and Water, because when they go in and do a large-scale project, they, we require them to resurface the street. So with our bond and our CIP and large projects with, whether it's gas, stormwater, water, or MSD, so that was the first time that's happened in a long time. But I don't have to tell you, we have a long way to go, and that's one of our challenges. Along with that is really the impact of growth on our core service delivery. I think we're, our organization needs to continue to be disciplined and accountable on the delivery of core services. It's really some of the most important things that our city is responsible for. Finally, departmental goals, goes without saying, we want to improve our pavement and our sidewalk conditions as well as our stormwater infrastructure. We, well on our way with the help from Water and IT and others to implementing our asset management system, complete our bond projects and our CIP projects on time and within budget, and to continue to provide reliable solid waste and recycling services to our citizens. That concludes my report, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I've got a couple. So a couple of questions about solid waste. The two, the top two budget drivers, you mentioned the tipping fees, and then the biggest piece of the contracted services are both related to solid waste. And so, a few years ago, the city set out on an exploration of how we could, how we could divert more from the landfill. And one of the, I know there's the composting study theoretically that's maybe still happening with the county, but maybe not actually going anywhere, I'm not sure where that is. But one of the other things that, that we looked at very closely was pay-as-you-throw, and, and I seem to remember that the recommendation of staff was sort of to put that on hold, hire somebody else in solid waste, and, and see what could, see what we could do sort of internally. And so my question is, has, is, is, how is that going, and what is, what is the next step on those two things from your perspective?
I would say that right now, the load that is being carried to get us to where you're, you're talking about, where we can divert more waste from the waste stream, most of that is being carried by Amber and her team. The resources in solid waste right now, in our solid waste division are, are not there to, other than to advise and collaborate. We're working hard to pick up the trash and the brush every day.
Did, am I, did we, did we hire that other person in solid waste to focus on recycling, or that didn't happen? That has not happened? Okay. Okay, my bad then, okay.
Sorry, I didn't follow up on that part of your question.
No, no, it's fine, that's, that's fine, thanks.
So, I just, one question, just one, let me start with an observation, now, this is correct, this is not generally you, but this is to everybody. I mean, I think, if I'm counting right, I think maybe everybody but maybe one or two departments came here and said that one of the biggest issues they're having is attracting and retaining qualified staff, given where we are in the economy and everything. And I know earlier this year, you know, we had, you know, City Council, we had, we had, you know, budgeted the equivalent of a, of a 2.5% when initially we were asked by staff for a 3%. And so, I just, as, as we go into the next budget cycle, as we're looking at the ability to, to attract, to retain staff, I think that's something that we really want to take a hard look at. More, more directed to you, Greg, is, just a question I had, do we have in Public Works the equivalent of something like mutual aid, like you have in the Fire Department, that is like working with other municipalities or jurisdictions on some of the stuff that you guys do, either, either, you know, for pay or for, just for assistance?
We, we do, most of that councilman is related to emergency response. We have, being the largest municipality and largest public works department in this region, we have, I would probably say, half a dozen times within the past year or so, been able to help smaller towns with equipment or safety equipment, things like, what comes to mind is barricades or safety cones or concrete forms, things of that nature. I'm not sure if that's exactly what you're asking for, but we, we talk to one another a lot about, but quite honestly, their problems and our problems. Some of them are the same, but ours are, for the most part, pretty different.
And with respect to the county, are, is there any sort of collaboration that we have with the county in terms of the services that we provide versus, you know, things they offer, either contract out, is there any sort of, any, any sort of mutual aid to the extent you would consider that, or collaboration?
If there are, we work very closely with the county as it relates to solid waste, but they are, we're on two sides of that because we are on the collection side and they are on the, you know, the landfill side. So where those two operations meet, we work very closely with them, and of course, working on the sustainability studying that Julie mentioned earlier, that is another place that, looking forward. But as far as a, an own call, not an own call, but a mutual aid type thing, that's, that's really where we're at.
So things like snow plowing, too, just so folks know, I mean, how does that, how does that generally happen? We have, is the DOT covered the state? Can you just, for folks, because oftentimes we'll, we'll get calls to say, hey, look, my road hasn't been plowed, whose responsibility is it?
Sure.
Can you help us understand that?
Yeah, we, we have a formal and informal agreement with DOT to maintain and treat the roads. We're not going to be treating interstates, we're, we're not going to be treating US and NC primary routes, but secondary routes that are on the way to if we're, to where we're going, or if it is like Biltmore Avenue, if it's something that we're sitting in EOC and we hear the APD say, we need to make sure that this route going to the hospital is, is treated, we're going to go treat that road. And it is a, really a give-and-take relationship with DOT. They have the same struggles that we do, it is a, it's a hard job to, whether it is a hurricane or, or snow. But yes, there, it's, to the, to the public, it doesn't really matter if it's a city street or a state road, they just want it clear, and that's, that is a fair expectation. We recently finished our annual snow rodeo where we have our folks go out and prepare all of our equipment, but we also have a larger communication meeting that includes people from Mission, Highway Patrol, other municipalities, of course, DOT, the Buncombe County Transportation Department as far as the buses, Asheville City Schools, all of those folks come every year, and we talk about the best way to prioritize which roads we treat first, how to share resources. Been a, been a huge learning opportunity for us, and we're happy to host it every year.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, in response to Councilmember Kapoor's question about the salaries, I did want to point out to you all that on the county commissioner's agenda for Tuesday night, November 20th, they, they have completed a paying class salary compensation study, and they will be presenting it to the county commissioners. I've talked to the county, the interim county manager, and he's going to share it with us tomorrow. We would like to come back to you to show as a comparison how that class, paying class study relates to the positions that we have that are similar, such as administrative assistant. Not all jobs are covered. It could be that if, if we look at that and there are similarities, we may be coming back to you to ask if we can amend an agreement with them, their consultant, to be able to do the positions that, that aren't currently positions that are in the county. But we are trying to address that because we are losing a large number of employees to the county at this point in time because of the difference in pay.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Greg, people say nice things about you, too.
Yes.
They say nice things about all the city staff, but I've heard good things about you and you, Jane.
So that concludes our work session for today, unless there's anything else, and we'll take a break until we come back here at 5:00.